I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems appropriate on election night? Do you like the new again? All right, so we begin our agenda with a motion to accept our agenda. Can I have a move to accept our agenda for today?
Someone.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Bob Greidos is in London tonight, lucky him. So it's just the four of us. It's a fun bunch. Let's see. We do have a very exciting item on our agenda tonight, and that is a recognition of all of you, students and parents, for supporting students. And that is the Area All-State Festival. And I guess it's a music award. And you are some outstanding students who also play musician, musical instruments, or you are musicians who also happen to be outstanding students. Either way, we're here tonight to recognize you and thank you for being here. I think we'll turn it over to Deb to say a few words about the people in this room.
Well, the festival...
Mrs. Tuzman, could you come maybe to the mic right here so we make sure everybody can hear you? Either is fine.
Hello. So Area All-State is a festival in which students from all over Westchester County, from many different districts, come together and are selected based on their high achieving NISMS scores that they received in the spring. And they've been selected through a rigorous application process and have been chosen to participate in bands, symphony, orchestra, or orchestra chorus. And is there one more? Just the choral ensemble as well. Anything else that we should add about the Area All-State? Just that they get together for just a few rehearsals, and then they have a big performance, which will be on Thursday, November... This Thursday, November...
Sixth.
What is the date on that? Sixth. November 6th. So it's at Suny Purchase.
They invite guest conductors.
Yeah. Everybody hear that? So guest conductors come from all over to conduct these rehearsals and work with the students.
Very good. So not only do we want to take a second to acknowledge our wonderful artistic students that are here with us this evening, but we certainly should again acknowledge parents for all of your support and dedication because, as Mr. Whitney referenced, without your encouragement and support, certainly our kids wouldn't be where they are today. And of course, our fine music department. Look at Ms. Tuzman. Of course, just the last to Mr. Goldberg. So thank you, thank you all, for all of your hard work and support of our students. So now, Mr. Whitney is going to acknowledge each student individually. We'll ask that... They have the certificates in the mat? So why don't we have our fine music teachers come to the front of the room? Students, as you come up to be recognized, please come across, shake our hands, and receive a certificate of recognition. So you have your list?
Okay. Let's see. From the String Orchestra, Maxine Bell. Nora Sirkardt. Congratulations. Gabe Siegel. Swati Narayan. Luke Hartwells. And from the band, we have Zoe Mermelstein. And Remy Mermelstein. And Gillian Conlin. And from the Symphony Orchestra, we have Tiara... Sorry. Hornet. And Clara Montgomery. And Miles Gilbert. And Elizabeth Wang. And Ethan Weinstein. And from the All-State Chorus, we have David Chu. And Amanda Blas. And Ileana Zinker. And Shay Young-Kang.
She could not be here this evening.
And Lisa Kuziak. Katie Grabar. Congratulations to all of you. Well deserved.
They all make it easy because they make us so proud. Good luck on Thursday. You're gonna be great. All right, thank you. Where's your audience, Mr. Mayor?
The boys are so tall, Mike. Like, oh my god, every time I...
Board recognition, IAA.
All right, we'll move on to another very important recognition. For anybody who wants to stay and recognize us? Anybody? You lurk? So I'm actually not gonna say much about this because it seems a little like...
Self-congrat... yeah?
Yeah, self-congratulatory. So I'll pass it over to Chris to say a few words. And I don't really wanna say anything about us.
Yeah, so it is that time of year where across the state we have school districts that opt to recognize their Board of Education members for their service to their school districts and community. And certainly Irvington is no different. We have five board members who devote countless hours of their time to the betterment of our district and to provide for outstanding experiences for our children. So tonight, we've invited a number of folks to come forward to extend their gratitude to the board for all that you do for our district, for our students, and for our faculty and staff, and moreover, for the entire community. I am gonna go first with a little thank you from the district to each board member. So Mrs. Kernner, we can pass that down. Mr. Montgomery. Mrs. Cashin. And Mrs. Weinstein. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm everyone in the district. It's not ticking. But now, I would all like to ask our mayor, Mr. Brian Smith, to step forward and say a few words in behalf of the village. Brian?
Sure. Well, thank you for all staying. I would like to make officially noted in the minutes to reverse to agenda items next year. But, you know, this is a good thing to do because I think, I look around, all the different volunteers in the village, I think the most thankless, the most demanding, and least appreciated job is the school board. You have the two most important things to most people. You have money and you have our children. And how you manage those two things is second-guessed by pretty much every resident and even some non-Irvington residents that live in Tarrytown, like me growing up. So it is, I think, almost 100 percent thankless, except maybe for this night. And, you know, we were waiting for Bob Greidos to be away, so I can say this with all sincerity. So, but thank you all for everything you do. He did say he could have his cookies, by the way. That's real. But honestly, all kidding aside, it is an unbelievable thing that you decide to do. I'm always amazed that we have very qualified candidates running for the school board every year when it seems we can't get anyone to run for the village, which is honestly a much easier job. So without further ado, I'll read you the proclamation. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by the more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. And whereas the members of New York's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And now therefore I, Brian C. Smith, serving as the mayor of the village of Irvington, to hereby proclaim October 27th to 31st, which is last week, as School Board Recognition Week. So I'll present this to you, Phil. Thank you very much, Phil.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming this evening. Next, I'd like to invite Kathy Dull from the Irvington Faculty Association.
Hello, everybody. Couple years ago, the IFA started a little tradition that we thought was funny to give you a chocolate aspirin for this event because, you know, you have headaches. We get it. But this year, we thought maybe we'd do a different theme. Don't worry, you're still getting chocolate. But because the bond for the fields and things passed, maybe you have one less headache on your plate. So we went with a sports theme. And my thinking about it was that really, we're a team, and there's a lot of, you know, our culture really likes sports analogies. So, you know, we like to think of ourselves as part of the team in Irvington. And we recognize that there's a lot of different points of view, but we really are very proud to be working with such a dedicated board that's very committed to doing the best for our students and our schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
You get that one as well, Brian?
No, maybe you wanna give it to Sherry and she can drop it off for you.
Very good. So next, I would like to invite representatives from the IAA up. So we have our co-presidents, David Sotile and Scott Palermo.
So on behalf of the Irvington administrators, we'd like to thank you for all your support all year long and working in partnership with us to make sure that everything is running smoothly in the district. And when they're not, your support in those circumstances as well. Sometimes we have to find those solutions. And in that vein, we once again continue with our last year's theme of an Irvington board member survival kit. We got your coffee mug with those long board meeting nights. And we do recognize we gave you the same mug last year. So is this a collectible series that we started? There are pens in here for adding things into the budget and our taking things out of the budget.
It should be a red pen.
That's right. We have a little towel in here for when you realize that the tax cap that says it's 2% is really only 1.25%. Finally, we wanna make sure your cars are marked appropriately in the parking lot in case the decisions don't go well.
What are you driving again? Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
The mugs, yeah, these mugs are great.
Next. Mrs. Kim, you're here on behalf of the Education Foundation. So please, come to the microphone.
Hello. I'm Trisha. I'm here on behalf of the Irvington Education Foundation. And really, thank you. Everyone has said what you do. We all... we're 25 people, and we are so grateful for everything you do, and we understand. So thank you. In appreciation for everything you do, we made a donation to the Friends of the Irvington Public Library in all your names. You're all supporters, and I'm sure you know everything they do. They do all the children's programs, adult ones, restoring the Tiffany Breakfast Room and everything else. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, of course, from the PTSA, we have Sherri Wells.
Everyone's had everything that there needs to be said, but thank you for your dedication to our schools and our students. And as Brian said, it's probably the most thankless job. So, and I can appreciate that as being a volunteer, that we really appreciate all the time you give to our schools. And we brought you cookies, so...
All right.
Seriously, how many years? I've got like four cookies.
Thank you.
I was saying, I think I do have a set of these now. No, I think I have five.
Of the mugs?
Thank you very much, Sherri.
The plates are great.
Then finally, I have a message from the CSEA clerical, teacher aid, and custodial units who would like to thank the Board of Education for their countless hours of dedication and service to the Irvington school community. So thank you. You are appreciated in case you didn't notice this evening.
We feel loved. Thank you for all the cookies in my house. The kids have already eaten all the Halloween candy. So they will welcome the arrival of cookies. And we look forward to Christmas cookies and Valentine's Day cookies. Thank you very much. So we turn now to our omnipresent superintendent's report.
Thank you.
We've lost the last of our community in the blizzard of departures.
Maybe if we gave out the cookies.
Dr. Harrison?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So a few quick things to report on. We already had, I think, two very important acknowledgements, but I also want to acknowledge everyone that came together for our concussion awareness program that we facilitated last Thursday night in the campus theater. It was attended by approximately 40 to 45 community members that had the opportunity to learn a great deal about concussions, their diagnosis, and treatment. Our special guest speakers, we had our school physician, Dr. Huff, neuropsychologist, Dr. Mark Hirsig, and the College of New Rochelle head athletic trainer, Amanda Bachman. It was a great night, very, very informative. I think we could've gone on for a couple hours with questions and discussion. After the event concluded, we had many parents and community members that stayed around to have conversation with our experts. So I want to certainly thank everyone for attending that evening, especially our special guests, and to thank Mr. McCormick, our athletic director, for organizing the event. If college is on your horizon, we may have the program coming up for you this Thursday night, 7:00 PM. In our chorus room will be the annual college financial aid night, which will be facilitated by Dr. Bart Grishon, a college admissions director, who will be here to help folks begin to plan or work out some of those final details for the college process in helping you identify means to afford college for your children. Over the past couple months, there's obviously been a lot of concern regarding the recent virus, the EDV-68, and of course, the concerns that have really raced across the globe with respect to Ebola. I want to give the board and the community an update and assurance that we are following close guidelines that have been identified not only by Department of Health and SED, but also remain in close communication with our school physician. Our nurses have all been schooled in appropriate protocols for diagnosing and treatment should there be any suspicious concerns. Mr. Palermo and Ms. Krieger last week spent time with the nurses reviewing those protocols that have been identified as best practice by the Department of Health. So we are confident that our nurses are prepared to respond should we have any concerns in our community and have the necessary partnership with our doctor and state agencies to respond accordingly. Also along the way, there were some particular cleaning products that had been identified by the Department of Health as best suited to be able to clean in case you had an outbreak of the flu in the school, with particular attention to the most recent flu of concern, V-68. And being proactive, Mr. Knowles and Ms. Miller have ordered a supply of those to have in-house to be able to clean our largest facility should a concern or need surface. So where these are all certain scary times, please be assured that the school district and our personnel are prepared and ready to respond should we have any kind of outbreak of illness. And we remain in contact with all those organizations to make sure we're on top of best practice in all the recent guidance that is being provided across the state and country. Another item that I wanted to report on is Part 154 of the Commissioners' Regulations. So the Commissioners' Regulations, in many ways, are like another layer of law for the school districts. Part 154 specifically pertains to English language learners, so ESL instruction or bilingual instruction. Those regulations were recently revised and will go in effect in the 1516 school year. Because of changes in the requirements for the levels and types of service and the extent of service that students must receive who are identified in need of additional language support, we foresee that there's going to be impacts on our district programmatically and financially because we foresee the need to be able to have to add additional staff to fulfill these new requirements that have been established in the state of New York. I've asked Mr. Palermo to join us this evening to provide kind of a back-of-the-envelope type version of what the changes in the regulation are and how that kind of... We foresee that being an impact here in Irvington on our program. So Scott?
Thank you. So the Part 154, as Chris indicated, are what govern ESL bilingual services and for English language learners. We are... our population of English language learners is not so large that we are required to have a bilingual program. So in our case, it's really only English as a second language services. The major difference between what was and what now will be is the way that those services are delivered and in the setting in which they're delivered. Prior to this, beginning and intermediate students, and that has to do with skill levels and facility with English, were required to have 360 minutes a week of ESL instruction, advanced 180. The difference in the new regulations is that half of that time now has to be delivered in an integrated setting. So you're no longer... from up to this point, we've done our ESL services on a pull-out basis during the day at some point or other. They came to the ESL teacher and were instructed in English language facility. Now, half of that, the ESL teacher, will need to go into the classroom. That's obviously going to have some impact on how able... how far we can stretch our current ESL staff, hence the need for additional staff. This becomes particularly evident at the secondary level where we may have a student at one in ninth, one in 11th, one in 10th grade, and in different subject matters and different times of the day. So it's really gonna stretch us quite a bit. We've... I've sat with our two current ESL staff members and sort of analyzed our current staff, our student population, and it looks like we could meet all of those needs with the new configuration with one additional full-time ESL teacher. But obviously, that's gonna be a budget consideration when the... as we get into the season. But I wanted to give you a heads-up upfront that these regulations do go into effect next year, and they will have those kinds of implications. Were we to have a number of students move in and things, that could change, but that looks like the current situation.
The date of the change is effective in September 1?
Yes. Yep, so we have at our option, we can adopt some things earlier than that, but in terms of the staffing implications, we would not do that until next year. There are some pending regulation changes that are going to allow students who are both ELLs and also a student with a disability to be evaluated by the CSE to take a look and say... Because sometimes kids can't test out of ESL services because they have a disability that's tampering their ability to pass the test that takes you out of it. So the CSE will now, if these regulations are adopted, have the power to say the primary issue here is the learning disability or other impairment of whatever type. And so we're going to either take them out of ESL or reduce those services. But currently, that is not the case. They are required to get the full program in both sides of the programming issue. But so it'll give us some flexibility there in taking a look at some of our students.
Great. And I think, so as Scott indicated, our initial indications are pointing towards an increase of approximately one additional faculty member. But that's not sitting down and considering any new students that may arrive and any other scheduling dynamics that have to be worked through. So since these were just approved in the past few weeks, in the last month, by SED, Scott, as he said, spent the time with the teachers to look at the existing known caseload and look at the dynamics of scheduling as we see it today to make that projection. The next step for us, we actually begin next week with our administrative team and having this same conversation with them and delving deeper to start to look at some of the logistics of scheduling to see if that initial projection of 1.0 increase will satisfy the needs that we foresee for us. The one piece, I think, that was also additional service, and maybe I zoned out for a second, but the students, the continuation of service, the half unit?
Thank you for reminding me, yes. The... in the past, when a student tested out of being an ELL and passed the NICE slot, which is the test that you have to pass in order to do that, we were able to simply monitor that student for an additional year or an additional two years to determine, making sure that they were staying afloat without that support service. Now, with the new regulations, for a period of two years after they qualify out, we will have to provide half of the level of service that they would... than an advanced student would be getting, so 90 minutes a week of direct service. So that's an additional stretch on our resources.
So even though they test out of it, you still have to provide for two years?
For two years?
90 minutes a week?
Correct. So obviously, that's a population that we have not been directly serving. We've been monitoring and providing generally what has happened in the past is ESL teacher has let the student know, you know, I'm still here if you ever need it, and you can stop by. And they touch base with all the teachers to make sure that they're doing all right. But in this... But in this case, now there's a mandate for 90 minutes a week.
Can you, I mean, are there, are English Language Learners sort of fairly evenly spread across grades, or do they tend to cluster in the elementary or the secondary, or?
We have, as you would imagine, we have far more students at the elementary level because ultimately, we support them and they test out.
Yeah, because I meant, do, most of them tend to come in kindergarten?
Well, not necessarily. We have them pretty well spread through K through 5, and then the numbers get a little more sparse at the secondary level because we've been able to support them and they test out by the end of fifth grade. However, sometimes students move in into middle school or high school with limited English proficiency at that point.
From abroad, whatever.
And then currently, at the secondary level, we have a couple of grade levels where we have no students identified at all. Obviously, that would be a big impact if somebody moved into that particular grade level, somebody moved in that was in need of the services at that grade level. Would, that's one of those contingencies that we can't plan for till it happens.
And is it going to affect the regular instruction? And how do you integrate instruction without it affecting what the other students are doing in that?
So we integrate most of our services. It actually would be more aligned with a lot of what we are trying to do and what we, which we frame as ideal, which is the teachers are pushing in. It helps them to know exactly what's going on in the classroom so that when they're supporting the students, they're actually supporting them in the work that's happening in the classroom. So we do, whenever possible, we try, especially at Main Street, we do reading services in the classroom. We do both, but reading services in the classroom, we do math services in the classroom, both. So I think it actually will support students better. I think the complexity of time is really the challenge, but as a service, it's probably a...
Well, I wasn't, I guess my, look, that's helpful to know. I was wondering what impact it has on the other kids in the, nothing.
Do that now, that's why I'm saying, it would be really similar to what we try and do.
It puts more language expertise in the classroom, so ultimately, I think it benefits all the students.
I would think it would be good for other students to hear what's, you know, that kind of.
It also benefits the teachers. So when the teachers hear, or how our professionals in some of those services, the things they do, they model certain things, and then the teachers can see what would be the best way to support students in the classroom. And especially with this service, I'd say that's not one that we have as aligned.
No, I absolutely agree, and I do think the service delivery system is going to be much stronger through this methodology, just obviously has implications for us budget-wise. But, you know, having, for instance, if an ESL teacher was in and there were a group of students that were English Language Learners, and that teacher took them for a reading group, it allows the other teacher to work with other groups and have more resources in the classroom. Each child, each child in the room gets more attention that way.
Are they generally kids whose first language is Spanish, or are there other?
We have a very wide diversity of languages. Part of the reason that we don't, we aren't required to have a bilingual program is that you have to have 25 students at a particular grade level of the same language, and we have such a diversity of language, we don't even come close to those numbers at any grade level.
Right.
I have a question about, you had mentioned the ESL and Special Ed. I mean, is that an area that we have a kind of a significant number of kids that fall in that range?
Well, I wouldn't say a significant number, but we have very definite students that clearly, because of other difficulties that they have with learning, are going to have a very hard time ever passing the NICE-Lot. And so this allows us that flexibility to say, this is the primary issue, and the other is really just a function of the primary issue. So we can take a look at that and say, let's, let's focus our ELL and ESL resources on the kids who really need it, and let's focus our special education services on the kids that are most appropriately addressed through special education. And it doesn't mean to say that somebody couldn't get both still. It's not an either-or situation, but the CSE makes that determination. And one of the changes in the regs is that the ESL teacher would be part of the CSE when that decision is made. So you bring the experts together.
Are there people, are there people, I'm sorry?
That's right.
Are there people who have a dual certification, a Special Ed and ESL, so that it would give us more flexibility in scheduling perhaps?
Well, there are such people. We don't have any in the district right now.
No, but I mean, as we're looking to hire, I'm just wondering if that might give us the flexibility to use them more as needed instead of just in one place.
It's true, and the regulations do allow either integrated, or if the teacher in the classroom has a bilingual extension, they can also serve that purpose simultaneously.
Oh, okay.
But we don't, the only person in the district right now is one of our speech therapists that has a bilingual extension, and so we are, we're able to do that in speech services, but that's about it.
My question would be, I presume that this is going to be paid for by the district without any additional aid from the state?
Well, those are going to, I think, might close in for marks there, in that as much as we certainly champion any opportunity to bring more students, services to our students, this represents another one of the majorly underfunded mandates in the state. Certainly, we have children that are in need of these services, and we want to provide them, but the increase in service does pose a hardship. So we currently have 1.5 FTEs, we, early projection, another one staff member. The funding that you receive for ELL services is Title III, and we receive, what is it, $6,000 or $8,000?
This year, I think we received six.
$6,000 is the money that we receive, and realistically, when that comes in, we utilize that to buy the instructional supplies and support for the, for the teachers. So this is a situation where the district does certainly carry this burden. So.
Hence the towel in your cup.
Great, thank you, Scott. The final thing to touch base on was with respect to technology, and I've asked Dr. Core tonight to talk about some of our technology work that has occurred really since the presentation in June, where she and Mr. Lubinski provided a very thorough presentation on the identification of the work that's going on in the district and naming some of our initiatives there. So I've asked Dr. Core to take a few minutes to talk about some of our work that has been ongoing since then.
Sure. So when Jesse and I presented the technology, I think we shared some really nice examples, but one of the things that we pointed out was, we have a few teachers who are doing a lot of the systemic work. So when I say that, in other words, all fourth graders get this experience, or all seventh graders get this experience. And that's very often being taught by our technology teachers rather than the integration of technology as part of the classroom practice. So we know we have some of that, but it's not systemic. It's not across the board. So in the spring, we shared with you the district technology framework, and now our work was really to develop the plan. And the plan means, so what are we actually going to do? What are we going to ask teachers to do? And how will we support teachers in doing this work? So this week, one of the things, when Dr. Harrison and I talked about it, was we knew that we wanted to do something that would be fairly succinct and of quality. So this week, we are running for four days of the week what we're calling a Technology Summit. And the Technology Summit is broken up into seven of the eight goals that were in that framework that you saw in the spring. And for each goal, we have teachers who are working with us to develop that goal, and which will ultimately then go back to the buildings. So every building will have a plan, the district plan, and then the building administrators with their technology committees at the building level will develop the plan for their building. Because what we know is that technology in second grade is not going to look the same as technology in 10th grade. So only a building-level plan will get us to a point where we're actually seeing technology integration in, across the district. So the Technology Summit is a chance to have teachers helping us to develop the plan that will become the K-12 Plan. So questions?
So you said that teachers will be developing each of the goals, right?
Yes.
Does that mean it's sort of one teacher with one goal and a different teacher with a different goal?
No, so we have a team of teachers for each goal. So for instance, in, for Goal 1, which is about one-to-one computing, we had about 20 teachers and a minute, a combination of 20 teachers and administrators, K through 12, and they worked with us for approximately three hours. And if you're, and I'm sure you don't have the framework etched in your, in your memories, but the way that the framework is laid out is there's a goal, there's the purpose for the goal, and then there's the teacher observable behaviors and student behaviors. So what would we see if we walked into a classroom? So that team is looking at that, and they're aligning it with technology standards. So we're going to have observable behaviors, standards that align to those behaviors, and then at the building level, what might that look like in a K-classroom, a seventh-grade classroom, and then, and so on.
So I kind of feel like this is your common core, common core standards, and then how it translates by grade, by, you know, within the schools.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of like that. You know, the ISTI standards, which are the technology standards, we had referred to those again in the spring when we shared with you the current technology status. The ISTI standards are really the most clean and comprehensive set of standards that are out there right now, and we think it's important to have a set of standards in the district, because otherwise, we have no way to say, well, here's what we expect, or here's what it should look like. So we need a way to describe what technology integration looks like. So the standards help us do that.
So you said it was four days this week, approximately three hours each day, or did it vary?
Three hours for each goal.
Three hours for each goal. And how many staff members were on teachers and stuff on each of these goals?
About 20. 20 teachers and administrators.
Or each?
Each goal.
Each goal, 20 each goal.
So it was different people for each goal?
Yes.
That's 160 people.
Right. So, and that's the, well, that's the power of the work. So if you're not going to involve teachers in the process, we can write all the plans that we want, and if teachers' voices are not helping to develop that plan, then we're never going to be able to move the work forward. So when we talked about it, we actually saw this as a pretty viable model in that we weren't pulling teachers for days on end, and we weren't pulling teachers for extended periods of time. Teachers also had the ability to sign up for the goal that they wanted to work on. So for instance, especially at the secondary level, a lot of the teachers looked to say, well, wait a minute, you know, the afternoons are lighter for me. I don't have as many classes, so I'm going to take an afternoon goal. Because ultimately, the secondary teachers, especially, none of the teachers like to miss their classes. So it gave the teachers the flexibility to work not only on a goal that is of interest to them, which is important, but also to be able to manage their schedules. So...
Teachers didn't have to miss their classes?
Well, they had to miss some because it's three hours, so nobody's free for all three. But somebody might have said, you know what, I only have one class in that, that's why I'm going to do the morning, or I'm going to do the afternoon. So they had that kind of flexibility. I can't tell you what...
Were they required to take?
No.
To take the period where they lost, they had the least teaching?
No.
Okay. So you don't really know if they took the flexibility or not?
I, well, I do because people shared it. So, but I, but I'm, but anecdotally, so I wouldn't sit here and list the name of people and say who did what. But anecdotally, yeah, I would say that that was what people, what some people looked to do. I think the other thing that we did, which was, how do we move technology in our district? So you can see the cart. I don't know where the other cart is. It's making me a little nervous. Okay. No, okay, I just, it's somewhere. So that's a Chromebook cart that's in the back of the room. And one of the things, and one of the goals that we were able to accomplish is, for each goal that we worked on, every teacher was working on a Chromebook, and we were all working in a single Google Doc. So we were expanding our use of technology and teaching teachers how to use technology as part of the process. So...
Did you get feedback from the teachers?
So I, after each day, I send out a feedback form, so I am getting feedback from the teachers.
Good.
So I wanted to clarify how much staff time this is taking this week?
I don't know if you have a question?
120 times 3.
120 times...
360 hours.
360.
Wait, 300, wait, is that right? Three hours over the course of the week for each staff member is involved? Times 140 staff. Seven goals, 20 hours per goal. Wait, 20 people per goal, seven goals, three hours per person per goal, right?
No, 10.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So that's 420 total hours?
Yeah.
And that's, and then what's happening to the instruction time that they're missing?
They have substitute teachers.
Okay.
Just in revisiting all your goals that you gave us in June, and then there's action items, and there's timelines, and it's, I guess my question is, your goals and your action items read like a plan to me. So it sounds like you're in the process of executing a plan, and you're just going to formalize it when you write it up, because it sounds like you guys are kind of moving forward through these goals. You're not creating a plan that you're then going to send out. You're actually, it seems like you're doing the plan and creating the plan at the same time. Is that what you've come doing?
I mean, I heard Raina say that the objective of this day was to create a plan.
Yeah, but, but I, but realistically, I agree with that, but I think that's semantics. Because realistically, when I'm looking at all these things, each single goal has action items that are resulting in changes that are going to happen. And it's not like a plan is a document that you read and then you say, okay, we're ready to move forward, let's make, let's put this into play. But the way I see this is you're putting it into play first, and then you're formalizing the plan second. But it seems like it's a plan and action to me. It's, I mean, because your goals are happening as you're thinking about them. You're not, you're not just, you're not only sitting in a room thinking about them academically. You're then going out and putting them into place.
Well, some of them, some yes and some no. I mean, some of them, as you read through, and when you see the more fleshed-out document, I mean, there are some that we're not that prepared to do yet. We don't even have the technology in place across the board to implement all of the plans. So I'm, I think there are, there is technology being used across our district in a lot of different ways, but one of the goals, Goal 3, is about professional development. So first, we're going to also have to figure out, we have some teachers who are really familiar with certain aspects of technology and other people who aren't. So if you read across the goals, for instance, Goal 1 is about really one-to-one computing, well, we don't have a one-to-one computing environment yet. So we're building that out. Our Chromebooks are helping us to build that out, but that's not where we are. So I would say, yes, Robin, to a certain degree, that's going to happen, but the reality is, we don't have all the pieces in place yet to operationalize that entire framework. Does that make sense?
Not completely.
Okay. So ask me another question, because I want to make sure.
Can I say one thing about what you just said, though?
Yeah.
But again, I feel like you're implementing a plan, and we're just not calling it that. That's kind of how I'm reading this. But, so like Goal 1, you say it's all about one-to-one computing, but we're not there yet. But it's, I mean, I was just at that tech summit with the Westchester Putnam School Boards and the Elric, however you say it, Laura Hudson...
Lowhead, yep.
Yeah. They jointly put it on, and they talked a lot about how pretty much the direction is bring your own device, and that this whole idea of setting up an environment and one-to-one is like, it's kind of, they didn't use one-to-one, but it sounds to me like they're, it isn't, aren't they competing with each other?
Sure. No, they were, they align with each other. So Goal 5 is BYOD in the framework. But we have to remember that at K through 5, our schools, we don't have a wireless infrastructure yet. So...
Well, I thought we weren't going to have what?
No, but I guess what I'm saying...
We weren't going to have bring-your-own devices in K through 5. That's our policy, right?
So the policy reset is correct.
Well, yeah, and I thought we more or less agreed we weren't going to go there.
I think we're just making a point about the application and the development of the goals.
Yeah.
But isn't that part of the plan is to make these decisions?
What's your, what's your, what are you asking, Raina?
I guess, I guess it seems...
Let's be focused here.
Okay. I guess as a board, it, based on what they said at this meeting, it sounds like as a board, they were saying boards need to set the vision for where we want to be in technology and how we want to move forward, along with the superintendent. But I, it sounds to me like a lot of this is moving forward, and, and it's just happening. And I'm wondering at what point do, I mean, you could say maybe, maybe the, maybe the answer is, you don't think it's the board's role to be involved in this? I guess to me, the line's a little blurry as to vision and planning and actually day-to-day on technology. And so I guess my question is, where do you see the board fitting into... And so, I guess my question is, where do you see the board fitting into all of the stuff that you're doing in terms of kind of figuring out the vision and the direction for the district?
So, I guess I just need greater clarification then, because we presented the framework to you in the spring, and in the spring, we shared that over the course of this year, we're going to be fleshing that out and naming what it looks like. So, in other words, what could this, here are the goals, this, what could it look like in 1st or 2nd or 3rd or 7th grade? So, I guess I would expect that that would be teachers who would be defining that, because I'm not sure what expertise, even for me, I mean, I would, I need to be working with teachers. So, I'm, I guess if you give me some direction, I guess I'm not sure what you mean when you're setting the direction. It's the teachers who are integrating it into the curriculum. So, I'm just not that clear on what you're asking.
Wait, Robin, may I re, actually, just to try to create some clarification. It sounds to me like there is a semantic issue that we're dealing with here, which is that you heard at this, at this conference that it's important for the board to set a vision. Were there descriptions of what that vision might be? Were there examples of that vision? Because I think the way you're interpreting vision to some degree is that that means that we should have a direct role, or an indirect role, in understanding the plan and influencing the plan. And the plan, as far as Raina is explaining it, is something that's being created in a much more granular way with teachers, right? And that's how it's sort of happening, and it's happening as we speak. Well, not as we speak, but it's happening during the day. What we've not done as a board is, we've not really created a vision for technology. We've been responding to and listening to various presentations that, you know, our administrators have made, but we've not actually taken the time to create the vision that you're describing. I mean, we haven't, we haven't actually put anything down.
Well, no, I guess I kind of thought we were waiting for the plan, but now, I mean, I did. I mean, I felt like for a few years, we'd been saying, can we have a plan? And it sounds like, okay, we're finally going to do a plan. But by utilizing so many, it just, to me, it seems like they're all wrapped up together. It's not like, it isn't like we're going to get a plan, and then we're going to be able to have a discussion as a board. It's more like the train is moving along, and at some point, when do we get a chance to kind of jump on and say, you know, let's define how we want to be as a district?
So, I think, just to finish my thought, the, the point about vision and plan is that a vision is at a very high level. It's like saying, a vision might be, we want to utilize all forms of technology to a maximum benefit of our student, for students' education with the provision that we don't exceed, you know, a certain amount of budgetary investment, something to that effect. But that's kind of a vision. Maybe that last part's a little more specific, but the first part is more of a vision, right?
There are levels of vision. I mean, but it might be, we do want to make a wireless environment at K to 12, and it might...
But that's not a vision, that's not really a vision. A vision is at a pretty high level. So, I think when they're talking about the board having a vision, just, a board might...
Well, I think, I mean, maybe we see, maybe we just define vision differently then.
Well, I'm just saying that a board might have a vision that's a lot more Luddite, which would be, we don't want to have technology in the classroom at all. We want to maintain, we want to, we want to keep our teachers teaching students...
A board might have that vision, and it seems like they're entitled. If the five of them agree, then they're entitled to have a vision.
I'm just saying that that's more of a visionary. So, I think we've never really said to our administrators that we, what direction we want to go in terms of our vision, other than we want to have a plan for technology.
Right.
That's kind of been our ask all along.
Well, I think two things. I think we want a plan, but at the same point, we want to, we want to be opening up opportunities for our students, at least, maybe I'm speaking for me. But I'd like to give my students opportunities sooner rather than later to utilize technology or be exposed to technology. And so, on one hand, you know, I, I guess on one hand, I do want a plan. On the other hand, it seems like we're spending a lot of time on doing this whole thing. It's a very big, it's a very, how do I describe this? It's a certain approach that you're taking to doing the plan, and I guess I, for one, was, no, I didn't get that you were going to make this. I saw your document, which we got mid-June, and then we broke for summer. I didn't realize that this was going to encompass, you know, hours and hours of teachers' time, and that each goal was going to be, it hearkens back to the old strategic plan with Kathy Matuzziak. Like, each goal had a committee, and each committee met over the course of the year, and, and it just, it just hearkens back to a much bigger, the event of creating the plan is a much bigger event than I had envisioned when we had talked about making a plan. That's, and so, I'm just trying to get my head around what's actually happening, because I wasn't aware of any of this. In fact, some people had mentioned the technology summit, and I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. That was a couple of weeks ago. Like, what's that? So, it's just, it's quite a big thing, and, and I guess, you know, just, just kind of understanding that now and as it's happening.
So, what's your, what's the ask that we're going to make here? If this, if there's some level of, you know, concern, or just you want more information? I mean, you want like to know the output of the summit?
Well, I guess I'd like to understand, I mean, one ask would be, I'd like to understand what commitment you see of the teachers' time during the course of the year. So, you know, in terms of hours pulled out of the classroom, I mean, that I would be curious.
This was it, so that's why we did it this way?
So, you don't think there's going to be anything else for the rest of the year else?
No, other than regular professional development. So, I think that probably the, the reason that when, you know, we talked about doing it this way was twofold. One is, we're going to be launching into budget season before we all know it. And so, and the question's going to come up about what technology, where are we going? What's our vision? Where are we? And so, it seemed like we needed to have something in place to be so that we could have those conversations. The, the identification of where we want to go through this plan, we thought, would inform your process for, you know, for where we go with budget. It was really hard. I think in the past, there was frustration. It felt like ether, right? Like, what are we doing?
Right.
So, this felt like it was a way to really be able to share comfortably, like, this is how we see getting from A to B to C. So...
Okay, so then, so then you think, can I just follow up on that?
Let me just one thing. Is it possible that your work now will then produce a ask back to us on the board?
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And is, and what timing did you envision for things ultimately making their way to the classroom in terms of new offerings to kids, or new classes, or things along those lines? Not, I mean, I think it's an ongoing thing in terms of teachers adopting strategy, but more of the things that we don't currently offer that we can bring in.
So, I, well, so what we're looking at is, we're really looking at 15, 16, in terms of anything new, because it's November, and either we budgeted for something or we didn't. So, there are new things that'll happen this year, but not new as a result of this work.
But you think in September of 15...
Yes, so...
We should be at a point, based on all this, that will be, that new things might be at, being introduced at that point?
Yes, so can I just give you one example? So, the other thing that we're looking at, which will come ultimately fit under this as well, is Project Lead the Way. So, we've had many conversations about really our limited use of something that is really a very powerful resource for us. So, we're actually looking, they have a K-5 component that we're going to explore, they have a middle school component, as well as some of the high school courses that, we've talked biomedical engineering, lots of opportunities. So, we're talking with Dave and Depp, the middle, all the administrations for all the buildings. That's just an example of something we're exploring that we would be looking at possibly for 15, 16, but we need to know that now, because if there are, you know, budget implications, then we need to know that. And there may not be, because as a result of Project Lead the Way, if we have a teacher who's certified, we wouldn't necessarily pay more to offer another PLTW course. So, you know, so some might have budgets, some may not.
But you had said during budget season, when you talked about Project Lead the Way, I specifically remember you saying, at this point, we are not even sure that that's the direction we want to go, and we need to see what other options are out there. So, have you explored other options, and have you made the determination that this is the direction we're going, or are we still in the process of looking across the board?
I mean, I'm not sure when you, when you say other directions. So, in other words, what I think the conversation was, was about trying to understand what else Project Lead the Way could provide, because one of the things you had shared was that originally it was supposed to be a sequence, and then we didn't do this weekend. So, I wasn't necessarily looking to go find another engineering course. I mean, we have someone who's been trained in doing it.
Right.
But we were looking to say, well, wait a minute, what does a sequence look like? Well, what other courses could we be adding as elective? So, that's where we are now.
Right, but my recollection of the conversation also, that it was somewhat tied to new offerings of computer classes as well.
Yes.
You pointed out that we only have one teacher certified to teach both Project Lead the Way-type courses and computer courses. So, that you, my recollection was that you kind of had specifically said, as we look to Project Lead the Way, we're also going to look at other things, because obviously, we only have limited bandwidth moving forward, and we have to optimize our choices. So, that was my take on the conversation. So, I guess I'm asking now, based on you saying Project Lead the Way, has that process been completed? And have you made the determination that this is definitely the way you're going? You're still kind of in the process of looking at things?
I would say we're in the process, but I think what we're saying is, we want to build our capacity. So, we've talked about app courses. In other words, what, what it felt like was that we were so limited to Project Lead the Way. So, what we're looking at is what else can Project Lead the Way actually offer us? But that's not, can't be the only direction that we go. So, that's sort of where we are.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I just want to remind everybody, we have a technology plan on the calendar for January 13. So, in effect, you know, the work that you've been doing...
Yes.
...gets wrapped into that and becomes part of the sort of information that we've asked for to influence our budget. Because remember, we kind of asked to get as much kind of a head start on the budget from the principals, and I suppose this is another example of, you know, this, there will be things in there that will require money for next year.
Point of information. The, was it eight goals? And we got those in the, I'm trying to figure out when, where, because I don't seem to have the paper where we got them, so when did we...
In the binder.
In what binder?
This one.
The binder that we got into the year.
Oh, that, okay.
The one that we got in June.
Okay, okay, okay.
Can I ask? Oh, I'm sorry, you don't...
And that was, was that also, was that posted publicly too, by the way?
Sure.
Well, it's standard draft, so I don't know.
Well, it doesn't...
Well, that, at that point, it was printed, it was, but, yeah, we, there's no reason not to.
Yeah, I, we can check.
If it isn't, it will be, yeah.
Seems to me it might be nice to have a little, you know, technology page or something on a website where these sorts of documents are gathered.
Out of just curiosity, there are eight goals, but you convened seven different groups. Which is the goal that you didn't?
Goal 2. So, Goal 2 is about peripherals. It's somewhat hardware-driven, so it wouldn't be a goal where we'd pull teachers from their classrooms, obviously, to do that goal, because we didn't necessarily need their voices to help build that one out.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
View of the time, can we move on? Are there any other comments on this? We can always address it again in two weeks.
Okay.
It's a discussion. If there's more, I'd comment.
Very good.
All right. So, that...
That concludes my report for tonight.
That's it, okay. So, people will notice that we are going to try to use the information section in Chris's report to communicate what are the topics that we'll be discussing. And I'll just take the question, as the board president, maybe we can just be a little bit more clear about what we're, and technology didn't really do justice to all of the discussion we just had. Something we can just express a little bit more.
It was a first pass at all.
Exactly, yeah.
We can be more specific.
We want to be able to tell people, you know, that we'll be talking about technology, even though there's no technology, formal technology. All right, so we move on to our comments from the community, and seeing none, we move on to the business of the board, and we have an update to a policy. And this is a policy on our field trips and excursions, and this is a change that we are making as far as as to waive the old policy, number 8460.
Wait, wait one second.
Oh, wait, wait in a second, reading, pardon me, thank you. And essentially, adopt the, the new policy with the, with the edit. And the edit, giving credit where credit is due, is from John, who recognized that we had a trip that happened recently to Canada that was inside the window.
If it's clarity, we're exploring that possibility of a trip, and it, we could have, our own policy could have eliminated, eliminated that flexibility, because it was within a six-month window.
So, we've now excluded Canada from the definition of international, which was the...
Yeah. We won't tell the Canadians we did that. They might be upset. But, but, you know, well, that was something I brought up when we were originally talking about this policy.
And no one listened to you?
No one listened to me. I listened to me, but nobody else did. And, but, you know, Montreal is a lot closer than most parts of the United States, and didn't make a lot of sense, but...
So, can I have a motion to accept this new policy?
What, can you explain why we're waiving and what basis we waive? I mean, is then, isn't that kind of an extraordinary thing to waive a second reading? I mean, I, I'm just wondering if that...
Board has the liberty to do so. It was a simple edit and didn't see debate on the subject. We sent it out a couple of weeks ago with no feedback. It was, and that one, the board has a different priority in having a first and second reading. That's certainly a doable piece. It just, it was a minor edit.
Okay. No, I agree, it's a minor edit.
And this policy?
What?
What are you talking about?
We're editing...
This is the, this was posted as the first read of this policy change.
This was the first read, I missed that one.
But we're waiving, the, the motion, I believe, is to approve this policy, thereby waiving the second.
But it does say that we're waiving it. It was posted as if...
Oh, we did it?
Yes, it says we're waiving it, the second reading.
I...
Sorry if I wasn't clear about that.
Second reading of the policy.
So, we're waiving the second reading.
Okay, that's fine.
We're adopting the policy on the first reading.
Okay.
Okay. It's more, I have a wordsmithing thing, but, I mean, obviously, it's fine the way it is, but it just seems a little informal to say, except trips. Usually, we'd say, with the exception of, in a formal document like this. Again, it's pretty minor, but it makes a little funny.
So, you, you would, you would replace the word except with, with the exception of?
With the exception of.
Yeah, it's more words, why not?
So, you can amend it at this moment if...
I, I, you know, sorry about that. It just...
To me, that seems silly to me.
Just leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's fine. You can leave it, I'm just...
Let's just adopt this policy. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the policy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can vote no if you don't like the wording.
You know, you, it's fine. It's not, it's not significant, but you could also adopt the policy with the change of wording. You don't have to actually have a physical printed document in order to adopt the policy, just for future reference.
Understood.
So.
I chose not.
Okay.
The long-range planning committee met on November 4th last week, and that committee consists of.
Not November 4th, that's today.
October 30th.
October 30th, that's today. Pardon me. That's John and myself. And John, would you like to lead the charge on the comments?
Well, I don't know that I, I can kind of roughly summarize. I can't even remember. I honestly can't remember if we came to any kind of firm plan, but here's what I remember. Okay. We, we talked about re, restarting the long-term planning process. And we, I think our, our, we talked a little bit about what sort of formal input we'll have, we're going to have from the community and that. But that wasn't anything I thought we reached any firm conclusion on, but we kind of traded around ideas. I think what we, the idea we came up with is that we're going to, between the three of us, the policy committee, that is Phil, myself, and Chris, draft, come up with a first draft of, of kind of a mission and vision, goals, you know, what the word should be to describe it, who knows? But it'll be, you know, some sort of fairly high-level guidelines. And this is something we would then bring to the full board and have a board discussion about it. That would, I guess, make it a second draft. And then we would initiate a process of getting community, you know, through meetings or however, whatever other devices, could be surveys, could be focus groups, could be whatever, we can discuss that down the road, get feedback on that. And then maybe flush it out some more. And that would be, that would be kind of be the process. We wouldn't hopefully be too, have to be too overly involved about what we're doing. And it would be up to, I think, the administration to come up with kind of a lot of the nuts and bolts behind what the action items would be. And then we would have, at the end of the process, sometime in this academic year, we would then have a sort of a three-year, a plan with a, a document with a three- or five-year plan with sort of specifics on what, you know, was going to be, we were going to try to achieve in different areas year by year. And then that could be a living document that would be rolled forward year by year as we go. So we'd always have a five-year or a three-year. We haven't decided on the number of years, I don't think, planned. That's, so I think that's.
We even said we were going to try and get our first draft to the board at our next meeting, which now seems very soon, which is November 18th.
It's two weeks?
Yeah.
And if I recall, and maybe my recollection is a little different, but the thought was the conversation at the next meeting would be focusing in and around mission and goals specifically, mission and vision specifically, not building out a broader scope of the plan.
Right.
So in the first step of that effort, I compiled a bunch of samples that the committee's reviewing over the weekend and contrasted that two hours. I've also reached out to some resources, looking at, for some ideas for data collection, whether that be focus group models or surveys that could be used for the constituency as described.
I'm sorry, when you say data collection?
Survey, I said surveys, focus group protocols, something along those lines, help us collect additional information. I think that also important to mention, the community felt strongly, that there was need for that feedback from.
Committee.
From, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think, I think you said committee.
Did I? The committee saw the necessity for some community feedback, teachers, administrators, parents, residents, so on.
Yeah, although I think we differed some on how we'd go about that and left it.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we necessarily had a plan at that point.
Right, no, no. And I think that, you know, we might, you know, we may, mission, vision, and possibly high-level goals like what we have been using for the career goals, something like, at that level of, you know, aspiration and detail, which isn't much detail.
So can I just ask one question, just to clarify? So you guys are going to come up with kind of a framework of what these goals are? You're going to ask.
Mission and vision.
Mission, sorry, mission and vision.
Whatever those are.
But you're not going to ask for feedback from the community and staff members to help formulate that? It's after the fact?
Yes.
Right. I mean, the idea is we'd have a draft, and here's what we think, give us your comments, and it's a draft. We'll, you know, hopefully.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. Because I think, yeah, I think it works better to put something, well, I don't know. It's easier to put something out there.
And I was in agreement with John on that.
I don't think Chris disagreed.
Do we have a kind of end date in mind, when you kind of ideally would like, ideally, when you release the playbook, it's going to be?
Well, you said, I think.
November 4th, I think Chris said, Phil said.
January would be the time when we would really engage with the community, because obviously we can get our work done as a board prior to the holidays. That, that then would really position us well for having that discussion in January, prior to the budget, but it may overlap a bit. I don't know how many, because we get into the budget in February, obviously, it might overlap with that. But certainly trying to get it completely sowed up by March 1st.
And is the commute, the mission and the vision that you're looking to create, that's what you're looking to get community feedback on? Or is it also on the nuts and bolts of how to actually achieve the mission and the vision?
We didn't actually discuss that, but my feeling was that we would go deeper into some of the goal statements that would be similar to what we discussed with the goals for this year, which are fairly high-level aspirational goals. But I don't think we have any intention, as a long-range planning committee, to suggest that we should actually be billing out the whole plan, because we're trying to keep it relatively simple, the way Dobbs Ferraris was structured.
Right.
That thinking is that from the documents that we're creating, that the administration would then fill it out with more, more information relating to how we're going to get there.
Yeah, I don't think the committee has really decided on all those sort of things yet, but we all have our views on it at this point.
Maybe we need to schedule another meeting for next week.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, John. Now on to our communications committee report. So Robin and myself, we composed the communications committee. We made, we met on October 24th, and we discussed, do you want me to start off, or you want to start off, Robin?
No, go ahead.
Okay. We discussed a little bit about, a very short amount of time, about the communications around the bond referendum, and where we, and just generally the types of communications we use to get information out to the community. We then pivoted from that to talk about communication needs going forward. And Dr. Harrison presented to us a document which essentially outlined the needs for the district in terms of utilizing a professional service to help us write press releases and to take over either in entirety or in some partiality, the Facebook page. And meaning, writing stuff that would go into our Facebook page as a district. We use the Facebook page, obviously, to communicate to our community. We are hosting in the neighborhood of, what, seven times, six times a week, sometimes several times a day. It's quite a lot of work for Dr. Harrison and Mr. Lubinski, who also, I know, does some posting when Chris is not able to do it. And so the thinking is that a professional service would help in all of these areas. Dr. Harrison presented three different companies as possible choices that would help us do this. The price differential between the three of them was very, very modest, is sort of almost insignificant. It was in the $10,000 range for all three, meaning each individual proposal was in the $10,000 range. We discussed the fact that we have money in the budget that is about $5,000. And that, so this would be an additional $5,000 that we would be spending on this type of a vendor to help us. And, you know, from there, we just discussed the merits of whether we should be doing this, whether we should be spending $5,000 in the, or $10,000 in total, $5,000 beyond what had already been budgeted for this service. We also talked about the fact that we have been doing this for many years with Bosse's, with a woman who has since retired, and she helped us with our press releases in the past. And we paid, again, $4,000 or $5,000 to Bosse's for that service. And Bosse's is one of the vendors that Chris provided to us as a, as an option. And then two other vendors, I don't know if I should say their names or not, if that's appropriate, two other communications companies who specialize in working with school districts, one of whom we've already had some experience with, and that syntax. And then a third company that Hastings uses. Robin, would you like to add any more description to them? Did I not?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
What's the decision for the board on this, if any?
It's not an actionable item, essentially. We don't typically vote on expenses that are under $25,000. It's not, it's just not something that gets put on our agenda that we vote on. I think, you know, obviously, individual board members are going to have an opinion about whether or not we should do this or not. In the end, it's really up to the superintendent as to whether or not he wants to, wants to do this. And it would take a majority of board members to essentially, I suppose, request an action that would prevent him from doing it.
Right. And we know that a majority of board members would never do that.
I can't say what's going to happen.
There are four people here.
We don't even have a.
Yeah, but a majority of the five.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And I've made you, I've made my opinions on, the particular consultant you want to use, no, and I think to you. I think, I think we shouldn't use that particular consultant ever again.
I think to frame the overall picture. And we have a certain desire to want to enhance our communications, to bring more communication to the forefront, in and around teaching and learning, and using a variety of sources to do so, whether that is releasing things to print media, producing things that we release on our own website, our own news stories, Facebook and the like. And in doing so, I think this is an opportunity to take a great step forward. And certainly, it is much more affordable than some of the options that our neighboring districts have to deliver similar services. So I believe it's a step in, in the right direction, and will enhance our voice in the community and bring education to the forefront in those communications.
You know, I just realized this as I'm sitting here, and it worries me, which is the estimate that we were given has a number of $10,700. And I thought that was our fee. But now that I'm looking at it, it isn't our fee. It's actually their minimum, and that they'll be billing us hourly. And that's only based on five hours a week, is what this says, $55 an hour. So in other words, if they spend more than five, if they spend 10 hours a week on us, then that number goes to $20,000. That's not, I was never aware of that. I thought, and all the, kind of not having looked at this last page, I would say I just looked at the charts that you did, Chris, and it just seemed like, here's the cost of this. It seems to me that if they're handling all these things, then they're posting on the web, and that five hours a week is almost impossible to do all that, and that the number we're looking at is significantly higher than that. And that's a different story to me. So, I mean, if we're, if we're getting an estimate based on something that realistically is kind of difficult to achieve, then that's a little, it's kind of not a fair estimate for me to base my decision on. I mean, I think we need to take a step back and say, okay, let's look at this and realistically figure out how many hours a week they're going to spend on it. Because from what you're saying, I mean, posting on the website alone is going to be a few hours a week. And then let alone drafting press releases and everything. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, what's our cap on this? I mean, I don't want to end up spending $60,000 on a, on a company, because, and so, all that would mean, would mean that they spend 30 hours a week. And I think they conceivably could spend 30 hours a week.
But that wouldn't be, they couldn't spend that much money, because then we would have had to approve that expenditure.
But I don't think we would. In the totality, we would, but if they're going to spend it piecemeal, because they're just billing at an hourly rate, we wouldn't approve it, from what you're saying.
I think on an annualized basis, you look at.
Right. So again, I guess the question.
I don't disagree. I'm saying they're not going to spend $60,000.
Well, I honestly, I don't think 30 hours a week is unrealistic, based on what the scope is of what they're doing. I mean, you kind of could spend as much as you want. So I guess the question now I have, and again, I just realized this sitting here, and I would have asked this sooner, I totally would have, but I think we really need to figure out what number of hours a week we're doing. Because I would not want it to look to the public as if we're lowballing this so that we could get it approved and then move forward. And then in reality, it's not really the number of hours that we're, I mean, so I think, let's just come up with the realistic hours and then figure out from there, okay, does this really make sense for us?
So in looking at this, I see this as, this is a supplement to everything that we have today. And what we have in the 14, 15 school year, from a PR standpoint, is me. So to say that, that we would structure the work so as not to exceed this model, and as we're moving forward through this, this school year, we will use those experiences to inform whatever recommendations we would make in the budgetary process. You know, this is, this is something, there's going to be structure and discipline. This is not going to be something where we're going to say we're going to end up with a $60,000 figure. This is something where we're going to budget the time to be able to hit these targets.
But I mean, it just doesn't seem realistic. I mean, if we have one situation like Eastfield, let's just take Eastfield, for the period of weeks that that happened, the number of hours that our PR firm would be spending on, that'd be, you know, significantly more than 10 hours, I would say, just for the weeks when that was happening, in terms of meeting with them. And so, I mean, if you're committing to the board that you're going to cap this at $12,000, okay, that's one thing. But if you're telling me that, you know, I don't, I don't know what else we're saying.
I think he just said that he is committing to capping it at $12,000.
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure.
That's what I said. We will develop a system that will track and monitor that. I do want to remind the board, though, that when, using Eastfield as a reference, when we had Eastfield's situation come about two years ago, we contracted out for supplemental services that dealt with that level. So we had the Bosse service that was in place up until this year, when the individual retired. And then we contracted out, shaking your head. We contracted out to.
The Bosse service was never to handle, and we all knew that. I mean, this is a very different situation. I mean, you're saying they're going to provide us a much broader amount of services. Frankly, yes, I would assume we pay them more than we would pay Bosse's if it's broader. But I'm saying, I don't think this amount, for what we're asking for, I thought it was a retainer. I didn't realize it was an hourly fee, and that you were estimating to spend $10,700. I just, I don't think it sounds reasonable to me.
How about this? He has given us his commitment to stay within $12,000. More than that, what we could do, or what Dr. Harrison can do, is go back and get a different type of estimate that would clearly frame it as a retainer.
Like a retainer? Yeah, I would be curious, because it seems like it might be money well-spent for us to hire a firm on retainer and not have to worry about capping, you know, or whatever. I mean, it's just.
Because a retainer, but the retainer is going to be structured around a minimal amount of work, right?
Exactly.
So let's do this twofold. One, the commitment that I gave to sit within these budgetary constraints are real and will stand by it. How these were constructed was that people were writing proposals differently. So I tried to have them create something that mirrored one another, so it appeared to be more apples to apples. So maybe that created more of that atmosphere of the hourly piece than was there. And probably grew out of what Bosse's was, because that's the model of how they're doing their services today. So I can certainly go back and have that conversation with the vendors and see if there's something that can be dealt with that'd be similar to this, that would name things within a retainer.
Well, I think it just, in view of the fact that it's open-ended, the way it's worded, that for us to feel comfortable with the notion that it's going to ultimately stay within a certain spending limit, then that seems reasonable.
What? No.
Did you guys get this proposal?
No.
I think, I think you guys should also kind of eyeball it and see how you guys feel about it, too. I thought the whole board was getting that.
I think we got some sort of summary, but we didn't.
I'm sorry.
You had a summary.
Okay, I just thought we had said in the meeting that, maybe I'm probably not remembering right.
This is only syntax, this is not the other ones?
No, we didn't get any specific, any individual proposal.
No, we didn't, I didn't see it, that's all. Chris just did that summary, yeah.
Okay, no, we didn't get it.
We have a request, Chris, now, so.
Happy to see it.
All right. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda. You'll recall that we accept our agenda, and then we vote on it after we have had the opportunity to discuss specific items. So can I have a conclusion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. So we have our minutes, which presumably, unless John has any corrections, sometimes John notes things that I think tonight.
Does anybody else but me read the minutes?
That shall remain a secret.
Is it? I guess they shall.
We do.
Well, you don't, you don't vote on them.
We have staff resignations, coaching positions, some questions about that.
Is, there's a question about the coaching positions? Is this all of our winter coaching positions, or are there more that haven't been included? Because maybe we're still forming up positions or something.
Winter coaching.
No, I think this is everything.
I think fencing.
Is it everything? There's no modified anything? There's no modified basketball?
There was fencing and one assistant.
Right here. Oh, there it is. Okay, I didn't see that. Yep. Okay, so that's.
I don't want to be held to it. I think there's fencing. I think there's fencing. Fencing, we're still working on, and there may be, there may be one modified, one outstanding. I'm trying to remember. Fencing was one, though.
There might be one or two more.
Wrestling, correct?
I think it's more of a rec group in wrestling until they get to-
Until it's just varsity?
I think so.
Just high school?
I think it's just high school. Not 100%, but I think so.
So we think we're good there?
And just one recap on this. We added, this reflect, is this where we added the track coaching position in the budget last year, wasn't it?
Varsity assistant winter track.
Yeah, so that's showing up here, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a point of information.
Excellent memory, John.
Well, I was trying to, yeah.
Can I also ask a question, just to have, I think, Ms. Miller just explained the 11.4, the reappropriation of the budget.
That's to account for the $130,000 intermunicipal agreement that we received from the village of Wilmington.
So we just, we changed the account that was in there?
We have to account, put it in as a revenue code and an expenditure code.
I'm sorry, was that?
This is 11.4.
All right, okay.
Right, that's the money that we got.
Okay.
Which we already voted on the agreement, right?
Yeah, voted on the agreement and the work is being contracted through state contract vendors.
Anything else in the consent agenda that anybody has any questions on? Because that'll take us right up until 12. So, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, which is items eight, nine, 10, and 11?
So moved?
All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
We did move. My apologies.
So we are now approving the consent agenda for now. And we are finally on to our presentations, our discussion items. And we have really our final goal discussion for 2014-15. I think we have one modification from our discussion four weeks ago or three weeks ago, which is the-
Goal five.
The way that we worded goal five. And that goal now reads uphold high standards for district staff. And that was after extensive discussions between John, Robin, and Dr. Harrison to wordsmith that, and it got very short. And I think there was-
You're going to make it shorter if you want.
We even discussed eliminating it entirely.
We could take out either high standards or for district staff and just say uphold district staff or uphold high standards.
Hulled standards for, did anybody else have any other comments on that goal?
Um, no. I mean, I'm fine with this shortened version. I was also fine with totally deleting this goal.
Right. Does anybody want to move that we delete this goal entirely? Yep? Leave it as is?
Yeah, I guess the challenge, and we had some of the conversation here, was just, you know, our next step in the goals is framing what this looks like. And I think we started off with some maybe mixed messaging or what those words weren't saying, all that we thought they were going to say, and it was just having a hard time connecting the dots. And we acknowledged that we want to have high expectations for all of our staff. And the word staff was very deliberate, just not teachers, everybody. And it just, I think, kind of where we left it was that this is something that we're going to recognize that, that we're going to build upon in the next level of long-range planning and having, you know, something included that reflects that broader, I think, meteor statement was what I used in my last email to John and Robin on the subject. So I think this speaks to the expectations the board has, but we can work on defining it in the next process.
Right. All right, well, there's nothing to vote on. This is just discussion, so we would actually vote on this, we'd approve this in our next meeting.
May I, is there more of this, on this item? Because if not, I would-
There is none.
Okay, that's, that was going to be my question. I had thought, going back to when we first put these goals up, that the next step was going, because we basically agreed on them but for some wordsmithing on number five, which has now been done. I thought we were going to move quickly to getting more detail, because these were not anything in terms of what to do with. I thought we were going to be quickly moving to having details under these, what we were going to do. And, you know, I'm, this is not what I, I didn't expect that we would be at this stage without having, each of the meetings we've had on these, I expected to have that. I expected to have them tonight. And we haven't had them. So I'm, this is not what I at least expected out of the process.
Some greater level of specificity?
I have thought we were going to have individual bullet items under each of those, sort of more on the to-do for the year, you know, plan. And, because this is not a to-do-for-the-year plan at all. These could, and we didn't, I, that was, and I'm pretty sure if we go back to the, you know, the meetings, that's what we talked about.
Well, I, well, I remember-
I'm not sure why it hasn't happened.
I thought that we were developing the district goals and based on these goals, the bullets underneath, the specific action items underneath these goals, were going to be Chris's goals.
That was not, never my understanding.
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
How did you come to that understanding? Because we didn't talk about it that way.
I said it publicly. That's how I envisioned this. That's what I thought. What did you think?
We talked about it, yeah.
Yeah.
But they were going to be superintendent goals? And why aren't we seeing the superintendent goals, then?
Because we're not ready yet.
Once we formalize this, then-
Yeah, but these have been, these have been set for well over six weeks, probably.
Again, what's your, what's your request, John, that we add?
I'd like to express my, the fact that this isn't meeting the expectations I had on this. That's not a request, it's a statement.
Okay.
But I have a question, then. Why can't we adopt these tonight? We've talked about them for weeks. We all seem to be in agreement on most of them, either five is in or five is out. I mean, I don't, what's the, why are we waiting another two weeks to do this? I don't understand that.
The board could choose to adopt the goals if you wish tonight, and you could make such a motion to do that. The only thing that I would say is that we didn't promote that you were going to be adopting the goals, but the community, you know, if anyone's been watching at home, we've been having this conversation to John's recent point. This has been, we've been pretty close to this format for some time.
Right. Just like a final read?
Yeah, we were on this format in the end of September, I think.
I, I mean, I think we should just move forward. I think it's crazy to just stall it for another two weeks. I mean, why are you quartering for the year?
And just for point of clarification, it's on our calendar that tonight would be the night that we adopted these goals, on the calendar that we passed out in the beginning of the year that we all have. My thinking was that it was not unacceptable just to adopt them in the next meeting on the 18th. Because we haven't, we did not say that we were going to be adopting these tonight.
We don't have to tell people we're doing this, though.
I think it's okay.
I'm just explaining why we-
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm just uncomfortable with these being the district goals, as I've said. Because I think the district goals should have, as we did before, we should have sort of more, call them the superintendent's goals or call them the district goals. I don't know what the difference really is. We need to be more specific about, I think, about what we're, what needs to be done in a particular year. If we're going to spend any time on goal setting for the year, it has to relate to that year. And we haven't gotten that.
We started off with a more specific orientation, which then did not meet everyone's satisfaction at that meeting. Robin brought up the desire to have more aspirational goals that were not as specific. And we, at that meeting, decided to go down the aspirational direction, which you then did an excellent job of crafting. And I think the confusion is that there was discussion at one point that we might have sub-bullets under each of these goals. But at the same time, we did talk about the fact that the superintendent goals are going to be much more specific. And the superintendent goals are actually, it's a public document, so they work hand in hand together, but the district goals.
Well, that could be semantics, but I do feel strongly that, you know, we need, we need more detail.
Right.
You know, whose goals there are is somewhat immaterial, I think.
We are going to have more detailed goals in Dr. Harrison's goals?
Okay.
All right.
And they're going to be aligned with these goals.
Okay.
I think part of, part of why I suggested this was frankly, because it seemed like it would just be a little easier year in or out to be able to roll the district goals over.
Hey.
And it just seems like to have to go through this every year is really not the most efficient use of everyone's time.
Repeat that again, I'm sorry?
Well, I was hoping that if we had broader stroke district goals, it would be easier to roll over from year to year and not-
And then you could develop superintendent goals differently every year.
Every year. And that way, at least, we wouldn't have to spend the same amount of time every year kind of going through these and having this discussion. It seems to be not the best use of everyone's time on a yearly basis. I think it's a very important use of our time, but it would be great if we could-
That was discussed publicly.
Use it on an ongoing basis.
We discussed that previously.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the benefit I see of doing kind of broad strokes.
Can we move to, move on to what you guys were suggesting, which is to adopt these goals? So really, all we need is a motion to adopt these goals.
They can adopt them.
Have a motion that we can, and a second?
So moved.
We can vote.
No, you have to make the motion. You have to make the motion.
I'll have to ask his name. I'd like to make the motion to adopt the district goals as presented on-
Concept number four?
Right.
Concept number four.
Yes. And a second?
That's fine.
Second?
All in favor?
Okay.
So, Robin made the motion. Rhea seconded it. And we can still have more discussion. We don't have to vote, so-
Right. Comments?
Comments on this before we vote.
Do you want to wait a week?
Are we thinking of these as our goals for 2014-15? Or are we thinking of these? Question. Do you guys think that these are our goals for 2014-15? Or are these just our goals, we'll stop and we'll keep them until we change them?
Well, I think that's another board to decide. Next year, theoretically.
Well, suppose it's, yeah, but not, another board or this board can always change what it has, but, you know, we, the goals we had last year were not presumed to carry over.
Right.
Specifically, the language in the, in the agendas is the board will finalize the 14, 15 goals.
Right.
Okay.
So that's how we've been promoting this along the way.
Okay.
I think a part of that next step may be that these evolve into bigger picture goals with some tweaking. And I think when you develop long-range goals that are structured like that, the work that becomes the year-to-year piece is embedded within that strategic long-range plan.
That's right.
So this is, I think, what we've been saying, that framework that's going to lead us to the next step.
Right.
Okay. So, do you want to vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Done with our goal discussion. So lastly, we have the hiring protocol discussion, seemingly we had this one before as well. But we did say that we would discuss this at our retreat because we had an expert come in from the New York School Board Association that provided us with information about best practices in terms of hiring. And I think I'm not going to try to paraphrase what Barry said at this point, only because my memory is a bit foggy on exactly what he said in terms of our hiring protocol, other than that my memory is clear that he said with different levels of administrators, there are different approaches to how districts present final candidates to the board. And that it was not as conclusive, perhaps, as we thought it might be in terms of how administrators are, new hires are presented to the board. He did say that having resumes reviewed by board members for senior administrators, building principals, that that was highly unusual and not standard. But in terms of our desire to have a clear point of view about whether we should be seeing one or two candidates, that the board seen one or two candidates, I don't think Barry was as conclusive as we thought. So I think you were thinking that you might consider result, making some edits on this as a result.
Yeah, well, I think, and I don't think we were that far off in our last conversation here. And I think the dialogue was that we would be presenting, and I think, I can't really say, but presenting more than a single candidate in those cases for point of comparison and with the preference identified. Aside from that, there was discussion about those extraordinary situations where there may be one candidate that came, for whatever, if there was an extraordinary situation, we would deal with that on a case-by-case basis. So I think that, I think we were kind of at that point in our last conversation. I don't know if, I think Barry confirmed some of the dialogue we had along the way. The one thing and suggestion that was made in the last meeting that I think was the one area for discussion, and I don't know if I want to say compromise or our negotiating to a common ground, was that thought about when there were looking at, you know, administrative hires when we were heading into the process, that the administration would have a session with the board to discuss, you know, the what-ifs and the profile and the asks kind of things related to get that feedback to help inform the process.
Right.
So in my mind, I thought we were there on the first point already, and I think we're, we just never finished the conversation on that last point because of the hour and so on.
Right.
So I think that's where we were, and then I think that the conversation with respect to that conversation between administration and the board as well.
So are there any changes that we're making to this as a result of-
That would have to be integrated. The one thing that we're struggling to find in our notes, and may have to go back to the video to find unless Robin remembers, there was one suggestion that you made, and I couldn't find it in my notes, and I thought I wrote it down, so, yeah, so Lain, if you could look back to the video on that.
Do you know what date we met? I might have it written down.
It's over, please, over two.
Okay, let me see, I'm sorry.
Can I just interrupt for one moment? These guys are on the clock.
Okay.
Two minutes, you promise?
Okay.
Drill, unless we're going to be late.
I think they should just have-
I think we're going to be in here pretty quickly.
I think they should just have a few minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let them.
What?
Okay, let them.
Let them work.
We can-
She's going to go look and let them, here's the two minutes.
I was thinking we could just ask them to wait and then we would be done.
Oh.
Because I don't think we, this is the last thing.
Oh, I can't even remember it so long ago. What, the building, including all that, and any for assistant principals, did everyone's ask?
Come back, Lain, I think. Just ask them to wait for a couple of minutes.
Certainly not okay with any of this, but-
Okay. I could have sworn I brought that up, too. I don't remember that.
So you don't remember what it was?
We looked, we couldn't find it in our notes, so, and if not, we can go back and find the video.
Right.
Because I can remember Robin asked, directed a question, and Raina acknowledging, "Yeah, that's a good point. Let's make that change." And now we can't find it in our notes, so.
The other thing I would note, that I know is in the New York State School Board Association, kind of board guidelines that we got for the first retreat, we didn't have, because people couldn't make it for various reasons, was the suggestion that the board discuss with the superintendent ahead of any hiring, what the-
I just suggested this.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, it wouldn't normally be for teachers, but it could be in some situations, I think.
Well, I think, I think maybe certain teachers, if it has budgetary implications, no?
Well, not just budgetary implications, because that's separate. We normally have a discussion about budget. But if we have views about what characteristics we want teachers to have in certain fields, and I don't want to be specific because I just don't think we should be specific about that, but I think, I would hope we don't rule that out.
Yeah, I don't, John, I know that you've expressed that desire before. You've been very clear. I think that's one of those items that we probably don't agree on as a board, that we should be stepping into teacher hiring-
Well, we are asked to vote on teachers, right? And that vote only makes sense if we actually might have an opinion one way or another on the subject, and, you know, that risks a no vote, or an abstention, I think, in that case. If, you know, if the candidate is presented that doesn't conform to the views that a board member might have about what the right thing to do is. And, you know, some board members might have a private discussion and have influence on that, but other than, other than, it's not a void for the board to have a discussion.
I'm not sure what you mean about private discussion about hiring teachers.
I don't know what private discussions happen, but, anyway.
I kinda, just, I wanna step in here. I kinda think that when we discussed this document two weeks ago, or-
That, we were here two weeks ago.
A month ago.
Yeah.
I, I think Raina said it pretty well in terms of, you know, the hiring of the teachers. To me, I think that more, you use certain examples, like the, the principal dictates that. It's his school, it's his staff, or her, sorry, don't mean to, him or her. I, I believe you even said sometimes, given the personalities of who exists on the staff, you know, sometimes you want someone with more experience, or perhaps, you know, there's so much history there and so much experience that possibly a rising star might be more appropriate. I, I mean, I kind of, I'm not exactly sure what you, you think that we could provide that a building principal wouldn't be more-
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't just, we are the board of education, right? We may have views on this, and I think we should have the opportunity to express those views where we should have them. It's, I believe it's not only something, an opportunity we should have, it's a responsibility in certain circumstances.
I would agree with you on that, on an administrative level.
Yeah, look, I, I know that, I know that we're not gonna get a majority of the board to agree to this, I'm just stating my opinion on this. I know it's not gonna happen, I, I think it's unfortunate that the board is as laissez-faire as they are, but they are, that's the board we have, so, fine, we go on.
John, this is a document that we don't even vote on.
We can vote to have a change, though, if we so choose.
It's, but it's not, it's a protocol, it's not an item of action.
We can, we can, I could move to say it should be rescinded and rewritten. I would not get support for doing that, though, right? But a board could make that motion.
That's true.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's a protocol, and the majority of the board, at least, we have four members, I don't know how many, it's not interested in going there, so that's fine.
No, we're not.
Okay, that's fine.
So, what?
Do we, I mean, honestly, it's foggy, I mean, it's a month ago, it seems like a long time ago that we had discussion, because there's-
Might've been six weeks.
I mean, one of the other comments I had, and I know I asked this, and I, I would have to go back, and, and I should've gone back, I didn't realize, frankly, I wasn't even sure what we were doing with this tonight, and I apologize, but, did, you know, the whole idea, I wanna talk about interview committees for hiring of administrators, I mean, I've always said, and I still maintain, I kinda think board members should have the option to be on the assistant principal interview committees, as well as the principal interview committees, and I don't remember if we talked about this or not.
We did, and I know we did it pretty extensively, and that's where we went, we ended up with that compromise, I think, that we discussed before-
So that was a compromise to assistant principals?
Because I think, I'm not sure who suggested it, and said, and I think one of the closing remarks that I may, Phil or someone had was, "Chris, would you consider this as that next step, as the go-between of the model?" And I considered and said I thought it was a fine idea.
Did we change the document, though?
We have not changed the document, we will certainly do that.
But when I'm voting on the documents, or whether it's changed or not-
So we'll change it, and we'll circulate it, edit it copy?
Exactly.
Maybe that's what you were trying to remember, that-
No, there was something, there was, there was something else. So, so Robin, we can, we'll go back to the video and look for that one other edit that you suggested, and if we can't find it, we'll reach out to see if you can find it in your notes, okay?
It, I mean, I'm, one other thing on this document also, and again, I don't, I'm pretty sure we didn't ask to talk about this, but just on the interim administrators, when, I know often that happens really quickly, my only, I guess it's more of a request, it would actually be nice if we just had the chance to meet them when they are hired, because I find that-
Who, Robin, I'm sorry?
With the interim-
Interims?
Administrators, and, and again, I know it happens quickly, and it's rare that we have a, you know, a load of candidates to choose from when we're hiring an interim, but I often find that sometimes they're hired, and they're here, and like, we don't even, we don't even see them, like, it would be nice just to try to see at some point if we could just meet them, and not only just like them stand-
Give an example of who, I'm just-
An administrator?
Administrators?
Just like, more than just, and it might be that, that, yeah, more than just-
But Eileen, we did a hiring, Eileen, we did a hiring committee.
No, 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 I'm saying, but an interim, if the board doesn't sit on an interim, there's no committee on an interim, and say, we have like an emergency situation, and we hire a principal, I'm just, I'm just asked, it's more of a request, it's not anything we're gonna vote on, is it possible maybe to do a small meet-and-greet with the board and that interim administrator?
Absolutely.
Because I often feel like these people kind of appear sometimes, and it's like, yeah.
You said yes, yeah.
Absolutely, it's a great point. It's a great point.
All right. I think we're, we're done with our hiring protocol discussion, we have no community for questions, and, do we have any other comments from the board on any other matters, things that we look forward to, one item?
Oh, just as an FYI, when we're discussing the stipends for winter sports located on the website, it does mention a mars, I can't speak, a modified wrestling team and a varsity girls/boys fencing team. So those are the only two-
Oh, modified wrestling, okay.
Yeah, that are mentioned here, that we did not approve tonight.
And we'll follow up, and, and we had, one was just trying to secure a coach, and the other was getting the appropriate documentation, still, so.
So we'll have two additional ones to approve.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for catching that. Any other board comments?
I had one thing, and, I, I just, maybe we'd like to take two minutes to talk about the timing, I feel like we as a board are being a little bit negligent in terms of not having even reviewed Chris's from last year, and I know that the timing keeps getting put off.
Right, but do we need to talk about it here and?
Well, isn't, but isn't it part of our role, is, as a board, is to review the superintendent, and the timing of it is, well, just, yeah, because-
Why are we talking about this in public, why?
Isn't it a public thing?
It's the fact of a review, I would think, would be public.
I'm not talking about the review itself at all, just the timing, because every, I feel like we had a timeline in place, and it keeps getting pushed, and I feel like I'd like as a board, together, to agree to a new timeline so that we could actually make this happen, and it seems like we can only do that as a board, we can't really do that any other way.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe we can briefly, kind of, I, I'm not even sure where we're at in terms of timing, anyway, I mean, it seems like you kind of seem to have a better handle on it at this point, as president of the board, where we are in terms of timing.
I was not the one responsible for doing the review, you as the vice president would.
Okay, so then let's talk about that as the four of us, which is, when I originally, based on, you know, your suggestion, had talked to Bob about it, he, he really wanted to do the write-up. I offered to do it, I said I would do it, I explained that I understood that he was very busy this year, and he said, "No, no, I really wanna do it." But if that's, I mean, I'm not even sure what the holdup is now, to be honest, because we haven't really talked about it as a board, but if that's the holdup-
We were gonna talk about it tonight, we're gonna talk, we're now gonna talk about it on the 18th. Bob's not here tonight.
Okay, but the majority of the board is here. It just, I, I just think we need to move this forward, and I'd like to figure out if we can do that.
I think it, okay, well, we said we're gonna do it on the 18th.
I, I thought we didn't talk more about the details of it, I didn't realize we were gonna talk about the timing of it.
No, no.
I just wanna talk about the timing of it, that's all I wanna talk about.
Maybe we could create a timeline, maybe, is that, I guess, is that your ask?
We had, we had some very nice timelines that were originally established back in, for goal-setting, I don't, the, the goal-setting process and all that were kinda connected, I guess, and those deadlines just keep, well, they, first of all, slipped, and then they just disappeared, I guess, but, and it, it does feel like, you know, the things that, I mean, and everybody else, I'm sure, has already been reviewed in the district, and we certainly wanna-
Okay.
Be very, much more timely about this than we are.
Right.
So maybe we can work on a new timeline and circulate it?
It takes two minutes to do that.
Yeah.
I got sort of tired of chasing people around, so.
But, let's make some deadlines.
Though, I'm, I'm not gonna go into the details, but I, I really think if, if you're chasing someone around, and let's have a public discussion, let's set a timeline, and, you know, we could, we can make it happen, you know, a majority of the board can make a decision as to when the time is and how it's gonna happen. I think it's, it's hard to do it if we don't have a public discussion, because I, I'd like all of us to talk about it together. I mean, could we commit now to some kind of a timeline for this?
The 18th, we will talk about it in executive session, that's our next meeting, and then from that, you and, after that meeting, depending on whether we need a second one, you and Bob would meet with Dr. Harrison as the former executive board.
I guess that it does, really, we, we're gonna talk about it as a group, and then if we still need to talk about it again, then we're gonna have to set up another executive session, and then can we say, whatever that final date is, two weeks, does that seem fair, to write and deliver?
Well, are we gonna have something to talk off of on the 18th, or do we not know?
Yeah, we do.
So next week, we're gonna have something that we're gonna talk about.
Two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks, but we're gonna have a document to talk about.
I, I hope so.
Oh, okay, no, I was under the impression we were gonna have this kind of discussion, that's like, okay, I didn't understand that, I'm sorry, okay. I thought we were just gonna meet to have a discussion as to where we were. Okay, okay.
Yeah, that wasn't clear.
I didn't, I didn't understand that at all. I thought we were just gonna have this discussion on the 18th, so I'm like, why can't we have that discussion now in public? Because it's not really talking about anything.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so you're saying the 18th, we should have, we'll be able to get into more of the details of what it is, as opposed to just the timing of it?
No, no, that's a discussion that we've been postponing, because-
Okay. Oh, no, no, I'm fine with that.
We have all five board members.
I'm fine with that, okay, thank you.
So just for a point of clarity, and we promised our contract just 15 minutes ago.
I'll follow up on my comment for another meeting.
The thought was, so I'll, in creating the agenda, we'll schedule an executive session, 6:30 for a board conversation, and we have legal counsel coming to discuss a personnel matter afterwards.
Right.
I have one other issue I wanna raise. Everybody looks so horrified. You know, I had some, I think it would be helpful for us to have a revisit on, at some point before long, on how we go about thinking about and evaluating student achievement. You know, we've been doing it, I think, the same way for as long as I've been sitting in any form in these meetings, and it doesn't feel like we're nearly at the state of the art, or whatever the art could be, or at least what we can be doing on that subject. It feels like we're doing what's always been done, rather than what should be done in terms of that, and it would really be great to have Dr. Harrison and Dr. Core and the principals put their heads together and come, and come up with a better, you know, and come to us later in the year, and talk, later in the school year, and talk to us about how, you know, how we can really, how we really look at student achievement, how we really figure out how the students are doing, and I don't think we really look at it by seeing how we rank among Westchester districts and stuff like that.
And it's a conversation we've had, Phil and Maria have had that conversation with me, Raina and I have started the dialogue.
They haven't, yeah, I just don't think it's gotten to the board level, so it's good, yeah.
Yeah, no, but it's something where we've, we've already had it on some of our regular meeting agendas, and, and I think it may grow out of some of the types of conversations